So you know, look tomorrow?
Uh, well, people are coming, so I can't.
Oh, really? No, I haven't seen it. It was like an education. So it was really out.
Well. I was like, between my eyes, between my second. I was like, I'm sorry. 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 I was like, I'm sorry.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome all our regularly scheduled meeting at Town Montgomery Planning Board for Monday, October 28, 2019. Um, there are agendas on the front table, I believe, or did we run out? No, there's a few there left, a few left there. Um, as we always do, we have 10 minutes for comment session for items not on the agenda tonight. Okay, Barbara?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Barbara Lerner. Um, I own the property on 747 and 17K.
Can't hear it.
Hold the button down.
Yeah.
Tap the mic, just tap it.
Now, I'm Barbara Lerner. I own the property on the corner of 747 and 17K. And first, I would like a clarification regarding the coverage area. Um, researching how other municipalities treat coverage, they have all included the paved area in their coverage for a lot. Does Town Montgomery follow that same guideline? Um, the reason I ask is, for example, my tenant is looking, they want to increase their paved area for art storage and everything else. But my concern is that if we exceed the 30% rule, or I think it's still 30% in IB, I'm not sure. When New York State repaved, they really changed it a whole lot on our land. So does paved area not get included?
Correct. Correct. Under 70-20 lot coverage is defined as percent of total lot area occupied by main and accessory buildings.
So it's building alone. Okay. Well, that's good, because that clears up a lot. Um, New York is a home rule state, and sometimes we implement laws that are in excess of what the state has. For example, your local law four of 2004, according to page two and three, G and H, it eliminates wetlands, easements, et cetera, from the gross lot total. And this would make the net lot size, not gross, but the net used to calculate. Um, as I have gone, as many of us have gone through the FBIS and the finding statement, Blue Water has included the wetlands in their overall allocation to bring it down. I would ask that you have the applicant redo that percentage to make sure that we're...
That law was thrown out.
There's no, that law was thrown out?
Correct. With a master, with a...
The company has a point.
It was thrown out with a lawsuit.
Right.
Correct?
It was thrown out completely. But there's no rescission of the law on the books, and there's no master plan update from 2000, or from, what was it, 1998?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
In 2010.
So...
What year?
Who says local law of 2004, I think?
So four of 2004.
Yeah. Shouldn't there be a rescission to a local law?
When the judge says it's done, it's done.
And no rescission needs to be made?
To my knowledge, court order.
Court order. Okay. Well, that clears that up, because that's just like a, that's just really, really odd. Um, so many other municipalities have also excluded the wetlands in their coverage area, and it just seemed to make perfect sense. Um, and it really doesn't make sense to exclude improved area in your coverage. I mean, I could, I could pave over my 16 acres and no one could say boo.
Which is why the law says what it said. The town agreed with you.
I'm confused.
Okay, well, this probably isn't the time.
Okay. All right. That's right.
He tried to make that happen, but that tore it out.
Correct.
So that law, that law was written specifically for the landmaster case?
No. It was a new comprehensive, like a part of a comprehensive.
They got tossed. And that acre lot was in it.
And yet, most other municipalities that I've been reading about include that. That's so odd.
That wasn't the reason, that wasn't, the baby got thrown out with the bathwater, so...
Gotcha. Okay.
I never responded.
Anyone else? Okay, um, going to our first regularly scheduled item, which is KCE New York 2 LLC and KCE New York 1-1 LLC, Route 17K and Browns Road. This is a battery, battery energy storage continuation of public hearing. Hi, do you guys want to update everyone on the board and the public?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Chairman. Just a brief update. And Attorney Hyde Clark, with law firm Young Summer here on behalf of Yafkin. Since our last meeting during the public hearing, we have submitted our light plans, which have been signed off by member Will Kelly. Uh, in addition, we've also met with the Coltonham Fire District and received a sign-off from the fire chief stating, um, that he had reviewed the plans and had agreed that there were no issues and we're going to continue to work with the fire district and work on our safety plan and make sure they're all set. And we've also received a final sign-off from the engineer, who in this case is Mr. Jim Farr. And he was also in contact with the fire chief, and we received a final sign-off from the engineer. So at this point, I don't have any further updates, but if there's any comments that we can respond to, happy to do so.
Okay. This is a continuation of a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience who has a comment or question on KCE this evening? Hi.
How you doing?
John Olson, right?
Yes.
How are you?
Good. How's everybody?
Good.
Good. I'm John Olson. What I do is I own the property, my wife and I own the property that they're going to be building on, hopefully. Um, you know, uh, the generation before me, my dad, my mom, my, my mom and my uncle, you know, they, um, they held on to a lot of things, especially property. Um, like my uncle, he was tough, you know? He wouldn't take 20 bucks for a can. He'd find a reason to keep that can for, for whatever reason. And, um, you know, now it's to the time now, my generation, of kind of looking at this land and saying, you know, it's time to let it go. Um, and that's why you're going to have, probably with that premise, you're going to have a lot more people probably coming up, because my generation finds, you know, there's a lot more technology out there, there's a lot more things out there than there was back then. And the land is being, you know, why pay taxes on something that's just going to sit there? And that's our premise of, back beyond what my generation was. Um, I've, I've grown up on that land, uh, in the front, in the back, approximately, we had 70 acres. And 50 of the acres, um, uh, it was very important to me to get rid of all this property, um, to people that really are conscientious of the land. Um, I grew up on the land, I hunt the land, I can't say I fished the land, but I snuck over a couple times to the Tapi's pond. But, um, but, you know, I'm an environmentalist as well. You know, I think a lot of sportsmen are environmentalists. And, um, it was very important for me to sell this land. I had people come up to me, uh, probably four or five different solar companies. I just, I just didn't, a lot of them had altitude problems. And, um, the thing was, for me, it just, it just wasn't a good fit. Uh, I've had construction, I've had people that wanted to lease the property for piping. Well, we have a piping company right over across the street. I don't need that problem. For a few bucks, you know, it, it, it would definitely would have paid a lot for my uncle's care while he was dying at home. But, you know, it wasn't a good fit, because we, like I said, you know, uh, we have a piping company, and I don't need that for a few bucks. So, uh, when Key Capture came to my house, uh, you know, I, I have a good, good intuition about people. They came to my house and they sat down with us and explained what they do. And, you know, within five or six words, I, I can tell how a conversation's going to go. Um, I don't know if the military taught me that, but, um, you know, by the tone or the content of the conversation. They, they just were great people to talk to. And I just found out tonight that, um, there's a handful of Eagle Scouts in Key Capture, and that means a lot to me. And, um, you know, they, like I said, they, they've done everything that you've asked them to. This fits. There's no, uh, I've had people on the front part of 17K on that property wanted to put pad sites, um, what have you, construction sites. Talked about a strip mall. That's all we need on 17K is another traffic light or anything like that, or curb cuts and things like that. I said, all that stuff didn't fit, but like I said, when these people came in, they're, they're, they're more environmentally concerned about the environment, about the place where I live, and I grew up. And, um, like I said, this is an unmanned building that they're putting up. You're going to go buy it, and it's probably going to take a couple years, a couple, three years to build. But once you go buy it, you're going to go buy it two or three times. If you're not looking at the wildlife in the field as right now, you're just going to go buy it and say, oh, okay. And, and then you'll forget about it. So hopefully, we can shore this up. And I just want to let you know what kind of people you're dealing with.
Thank you. Anyone else in comments?
Hi. Good evening. Uh, my name is Lynette Wright. Um, my husband and I purchased, um, the other part of the 50 acres that John had. And, um, the reason why John sold that to us was because we wanted to keep it a farm. Um, he wanted to keep those other front fields in the family and move forward with Key Capture. Um, and we were approached with Key Capture also, as far as putting in, um, you know, the solar. Uh, to me, it's the least invasive. Um, you don't have, we're not going to have traffic problems, uh, we don't have lighting. And if you look at it, the front of our house faces that one field, okay? The, um, landscape is not going to change. It's not going to affect the front part of the house. Um, as John said, he could have done anything. To me, they could have put a strip mall in there, and at that point in the game, we would be looking at cars in and out, traffic, garbage, and who knows what else. So I hope that you would go into favor with these guys. They are very, very knowledgeable. Um, they've been upfront, they've been honest with all of us. And, um, I think it's the least invasive, the less to the traffic, and I don't think it's going to be an eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Key Capture?
Hi. How you doing? Good. All right, I'm Roger Wright, the other half of the round one thing there. And I can vouch for John saying that his uncle liked a lot of stuff. But, um, this project that they're putting in, you know, I'm in the trucking industry, I drive through a lot of resin car businesses and things like that, strip malls. And I'm glad that we're looking to decide to do this, because have you ever been by a Dunkin' Donuts, uh, any one of those short order food things, fast food restaurants? Look at the ends of them and the fence, you got garbage all over the place. The last thing I want to do is sit there all day and pick garbage out of the tin roof that's going to flow through my house, so... We took the lesser of two evils. We're going to look out and not really see any kind of cars, dumpsters, people out back smoking, garbage flying across our fields or anything. I really hope you really consider this project. It's what this town needs right now instead of warehouses, so, thank you.
Anyone else for Key Capture? Board, any comments, questions?
Great, does this property border back as far as the Browns? This goes to the tin roof. Maybe this is more of a question from Mr. Farr, but maybe you gentlemen know. Um, is there any stormwater impoundment that we need, what we call the MS4, stormwater maintenance easement that the town needs? So that, we would need that.
The, um, we, we do have the impoundment in terms of easements in town, don't have the exact...
We have a model template.
Okay.
And in most commercial projects, it's required. Every now and then, there is no facility to maintain. But I, if there's an impoundment, I assume that there will be some long-term maintenance that anyone can assume.
I believe the detail would have been covered in those, what, easement?
Probably.
And it's, it's on page four, actually. I think that's...
Yes. So... With that...
No, that was there.
Yeah, but the, the MS4, yeah, because we have to have them as an MS4 community. So my question's answered. Yes, we need it to be a condition. Thank you.
Um, while you're here, hi.
Yeah.
What, aside from the, the MS4 and, um, the DEC permit that you'll need, is there any other approvals that you're going to have to acquire from outside agencies outside of this board?
So we've submitted the, um, the DOT curb cuts.
Okay.
We have the, as you stated, the DEC and the Army Corps permit, uh, which will also include a mitigation plan as part of that, um, to make up for the disturbance in the wetland.
Um, and one point of clarification, and with Hyde said about the wetlands, um, as you all know, these are two separate projects.
Right.
Uh, and we provided for Leslie, I believe it was last week, just an update, construction timeline on them. For that reason, we are submitting separate permits to the DTC and Army Corps.
Okay.
To permit the projects individually because of this, this is definitely doing because of the separate construction timeline. Uh, we have, we're prepared, uh, in order to submit those permits, we're required to have the negative declaration.
Correct, correct.
So our plan is to submit, uh, immediately, very quickly, the New York 11 permit. Uh, and then New York 2 would come sometime next year and make that available.
Okay.
Now, of course, in order to build the project, we're required to work with Central Hudson and the New York Independent System Operator, planning on the project you're talking about, to have all the necessary permissions to interconnect with it.
Thank you.
Just one, one more thing. In the emails going back and forth between Jim Farr and Mr. Hunt, Matthew Hunt, the fire chief, um, it was something about fire district wanted to have access to thermal, actually. It's my understanding that it's all remotely operated by you people and hard to access any operating system inside your building. So basically, they got to wait until the fire goes out before opening up the facility. Right, they're really, I mean, it was about thermal runaway, just was the fire chief's issue. It's not something that fire chief would be able to do with so many people remote, right?
Yeah, so the, the project, as you mentioned, is unmanned, so there's no one actually there physically watching it. But, um, the communications and all the data flowing from the project on a second-to-second basis, um, go through fiber optics and then monitored remotely, 24/7 by trained personnel. Um, the discussion with the fire department was around the potential to have access or to a little bit more of an inside look on some of that data. Uh, just so that if, you know, anything were to happen, that they could be as informed as possible. Um, so, um, in the course of our meeting, Aaron and Courtney and I down at the fire department, um, we did go through that potential and, uh, you know, probably some things to work out around exactly how, um, that data would be offered. Uh, we're committed to working with them to ensure that they have an inside view to the degree necessary on the budget.
How do you, how will you communicate with them in terms of the fire is out? You can go in and check it. Does somebody can come and let them in, or what's, they have a key, what's, how's that going to work?
Yeah, typically, there's a Knox box, uh, not only all the signage and phone numbers, but a Knox box that has other important information inside. Um, in the case of, of an emergency, there's also a number that can be called, essentially, I don't remember the term, but a chain of people that can be called, so someone will almost immediately be on the phone. In addition to the operations center, which is typically a third party, because they're 24/7. Um, so they'll, you know, immediately be able to communicate with us, but also with us from the operations center.
You don't want them opening doors and letting oxygen back in the facility, right?
Yeah, similar to our, um, project up in Stillwater that's already operational. Um, you know, the, the fire department conversation we had recently was really just the first of multiple conversations we'll be having in trainings, uh, during, you know, before, during construction, and then after it's operating, walk them through everything and, uh, make sure that the, um, operational plan and, uh, fire safety plan is clear and everyone's on the same page.
Are they going to need any special equipment, other than breathing apparatus when they finally go in there?
No, the, uh, the systems are, uh, built with all of the necessary fire suppression equipment in the case of, of emergencies. So, um, they're, they're all purpose-built, um, to support any, any potential, um, issue that arises.
And then, when the fire is out, the fire suppression gas that you're using, that's going to be evacuated out through the air conditioning or whatever system, ventilation system on the roof, is that how it works?
So they're, uh, they're closed systems.
Right.
Um, the gas does just naturally, um, disperse over time. But, uh, it is, you know, important that it remains a closed system, uh, in, during, uh, any emergency.
Eventually, it's going to be evacuated out of the building.
Eventually, yeah, of course, if, if there was an emergency after, after the emergency, you know, someone would eventually go in, but by that time, the gas would have dissipated.
How? I mean, is it, you know, that way that I could build it somehow, or you say it's dissipated?
I'm not an expert on this. Um, I did, we did submit the material safety data sheets for the, um, the NOVAC system that we're, that I think is, and it's actually the same system that we use at our, our New York one project. Um, I'm not a, not a chemist, so I can't speak to the exact, you know, process of the, of the gas dissipating, but...
I mean, you gotta dump it out, mix it with the outside air, and dilute it, I guess, eventually.
It's, um, identical to, or very similar to the kinds of systems that are used in occupied spaces, such as data centers. Um, because I know, you know, we're certainly not the first, um, system for facilities using this kind of fire suppression.
And the fire department will be trained in how to deal with whatever they're going to go against at that building when the time comes.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thanks. Is anyone else? Okay, um, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the hearing on KCE 2 and KCE 1-1. Is it 1-1 or 11?
11.
KCE 11. Um, motion by Rose, seconded by Ryan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do you like to sit down? I, I do have a neck deck that I'd like to get through here. Please bear with me, it'll take a few minutes, it's 11 full pages. Okay. This is a negative declaration for KCE New York 2 LLC and KCE New York 11 LLC for a special exception news permit and site plan for a utility installation of a battery energy system. Determination, please take notice that according to the provisions of six N Y C R R, part six seventeen point seven, the Town and Montgomery Planning Board acting as lead agency for a type one action following coordinated review procedures, having carefully reviewed and considered a full environmental assessment form and plans, having visited the site and considered comments from other agencies and from residents, has determined that the action as cited and described below will not have an adverse impact on the environment and therefore the planning board has adopted a resolution to this effect. Location is north side of New York State Route seventeen K, east of Brown's Road. It's a type one action. It's a one IB zone. Project description, Key Capture Energy, we'll call it K C E from here out, is seeking special exception use permit and site plan approval for two unstaffed battery electric energy storage facilities in a parcel located in the IB district on Route seventeen K east of Brown's Road. The northern and western boundaries of the lot are the center line of the Tin Brook as it passed, passes through the parent parcel in which form the zoning district boundary. A hundred-foot easement along the residential agricultural district at Lot Two was reserved as part of the subdivision and extends to the Central Hudson substation to the north. Key Capture Energy proposes to develop two u- utility scale battery storage facilities on the site to respond to intermittent grid fluctuations to enhance power grid reliability by providing ancillary services to the New York Independent System Operator. The two components of the use are proposed to be located on each of the two segments of the site that are physically separated by way of a segment of flood zone, though the parcel is not proposed to be subdivided and is a single application. The K C E New York two component is a larger of the two and is proposed for the larger eastern segment of the site. It consists of a small control house, some breakers, switches and a transformer with multiple batteries and inverters housing a fifty-four thousand nine hundred square foot building. The K C E New York eleven component consists of ten battery units with inverters and transformers aligned perpendicular to the highway. Because the two segments of the site are separated from one another by a floodplain, each component will have separate access driveways and the K C E New York two is proposed to have two such driveways in order to provide for adequate emergency and other access into the site and around the building. Because the project is located on a state highway, all access ways requi- require permit approval from New York State DOT. Background and reasons supporting the negative declaration. Based upon reviews of submitted plans and materials and submission of revised planned site visits, analysis by the board's professionals, comments by the board, other agencies and the public, with review of the submitted and revised E A F and additional studies and correspondence, it has been determined that the project will create no significant adverse environmental impact. The following shall serve as the board's evaluation of potential environmental concerns. Impacts on land and geological features. The site consists of approximately seventeen point three acres of land fronting on New York State Route seventeen K, bounded on the west and north by a section of the Tin Brook and containing federal wetlands and flood zones that are shown on the plan. The plan proposes to locate the two components of the site use on the upland areas of the site, generally speaking, though some disturbance of wetlands is proposed. Minor grading is naded in each portion of the site by the entrances for the area of the structure or the equipment installations as applicable and for the stormwater basin serving each. A portion of the electric line will be run underground for K C E New York eleven, but where it passes on the eastern rear portion of K C E New York two, it will then run overhead, proceeding overhead through the utility easement until it connects with the existing Central Hudson substation. The project is to be built in two phases. A SWIP incorporating marked limits of disturbance and stormwater management features, including the use of fire retention basins has been prepared, reviewed and found acceptable by the special planning board engineer. Erosion control measures are included in the plans as well as site stabilization measures. Accordingly, the planning board has determined that the action will result in no significant adverse impacts either to land or to geological features. Impacts on water resources. A wetland delineation was completed on the site and surrounding areas by Haley and Aldrich Engineer, Environmental and Engineering Consultants on December twelfth of two thousand eighteen. The wetland delineation was provided to the DEC, which asserted the eligibility for state regulatory jurisdiction over all the wetlands on the site and with a portion of the hundred-foot easement leading to the Central Hudson substation. The applicant has indicated that it is coordinating with the DEC and the Army Corps in developing a compensatory mitigation plan in the area north of K C E New York eleven to obtain a permit and to offset the disturbance associated with jurisdictional wetlands for the placement of six electric poles. Final land use approval, the issuance of the S U permit and site plan approval cannot take place until the receipt of all necessary permits in this regard and under preparation and submission of the compensatory mitigation plan that is acceptable with the DEC. The planning board cannot authorize work to be carried out in a regulated wetland or its adjacent area and can only render it secret determination. Final action on a proposed plan cannot occur until receipt of the required DEC permits and subject to any conditions imposed by that agency and any related agencies. As noted above, a SWIP has been prepared for the site and has been reviewed, revised and found to be acceptable by the planning board's special engineering consultant. Stormwater management basins are incorporated into the plans for water quality purposes. An MS four stormwater agreement is to be executed by the applicant to provide for maintenance of the stormwater management facilities incorporated in the plan. The applicant also prepared a spill prevention, control and countermeasure plan for the proposed project in order to avoid or minimize the potential for any transformer leaks on the site and any related environmental impact, recognizing the importance of the Tin Brook and related water resources. In the event of a spill, containment and cleanup procedures will, would be followed by contract with a local spill response team. Both the SWIP and the S P, the Soil Prevention Control and Countermeasure Plan will be followed through outside operation. The impervious surfaces proposed on the site include the battery energy storage building of the approximately fifty-four thousand nine hundred square foot, feet, the small control house, the bases associated with the switches and transformers, battery units in the K C E New York eleven and the three proposed paved driveways, driveway aprons to the state highway. The final SWIP will demonstrate that the proposed project would slightly decrease the post-construction stormwater runoff rates as compared to the existing rates. The proposed facility will be unstaffed and therefore will draw no groundwater, nor will it require the designer installation of an onsite sanitary wastewater disposal system. The applicant has indicated that the facility fire suppression system would use NFPA-approved fire suppression agents and specifically less NOVAC twelve thirty or similar, which is a gas that would be contained within the building if deployed and then released to the outside air. Impact on traffic, traffic safety and transportation. The site contains ample frontage on seventeen K with excellent site distance. A total of three driveways are proposed with a single driveway to K C E New York eleven and two to serve K C E New York two. While DOT typically prefers to reduce and combine curb cuts to the state highway and the Town and Montgomery zoning law also encourages the same. In the case of this specific plan in use, it is not an appropriate choice in order to provide for safe emergency access and circulation. The applicant must comply with all requirements of the DOT for the curb cut permits and for any measures that DOT may require for traffic control purposes during construction. The facilities will be gated to prevent unauthorized access. Impacts on plants and animals. The E A F mapper indicated the presence of potential presence or potential presence of Indiana bat on the site. In order to avoid potential harm to the Indiana bat, tree clearing must be limited to take place only between October first and before April first. The two installations will be fenced to keep out unauthorized personnel, but there is ample areas for wildlife passage between the two segments of the project. Impacts on agricultural resources, as noted previously, the site is included in Orange County Ag District one as an, and has been used for agricultural purposes. The location of the site along the state highway in an industrial district, coupled with its physical separation from the remainder of the Olson Farm operation on Brown's Road on the opposite side of the Tin Brook suggests that this parcel's highest use is for industrial purposes and the farm owners have willingly arranged to convey their property for this proposed use. The farm owners selling the parcel are the ones located closest to the proposed use, being directly adjacent to the north and have been notified of the use and register no objections, nor of owners of other nearby parcels located in the ag district and actively agriculturally used. Accordingly, the planning board determines that the action would not result in any significant adverse impact on agricultural resources. Impact on aesthetic, historic and archaeological resources. The site had been indicated as being archaeological sensitive, whereupon the applicant coordinated with New York State O P R H P. That issued, that agency issued an effect letter received on May thirty-first of two thousand nineteen. Impact on open space and recreation, the proposed plan creates no new residential uses and therefore no impact. Impact on critical environmental areas, the Town and Montgomery contains none. Impact on energy, noise, odor and air quality of public health. The proposed use is to take ener- electric energy from the grid, store it in batteries and to release it in periods of peak demand. This facility is a way to meet the variable demands of the utilities' customers without the need to generate greenhouse gases and it provides a way for renewable energy resources such as solar, wind power and may generate more power than needed during hours when it is not needed to make the plan available when it is needed. The applicant submitted a noise modeling study and information about the noise generating characteristics of the elements proposed on the site. The applicant later provided additional information to address the questions raised in regard to the initial modeling study as well as incorporating mitigation measures to reduce noise generated from site operations. Nowwithstanding that it demonstrated the initial application complied with noise standards set forth by NYSERDA. There will be lo- increased localized noise during construction of the project due to operation of heavy equipment, construction equipment, grading, delivery of equipment or material to the site. Construction hours and timing of completion have been clarified and updated from the submitted F E I, F E A F. Construction would only take place during weekdays and K C E New York eleven will be completed between May twenty twenty and November twenty twenty, while K C E New York two would be completed between April of twenty twenty-one and November of twenty twenty-one. A concern for sa- for safety of the batteries and for emergency services providers, particularly volunteer firefighters were, was evaluated. Regarding fire safety, the Colanham Fire Department has worked with the applicant to review the system and has reviewed copies of fire suppression plan for another key capture site that is fully permitted in Stillwater, New York. The planning board notes that the New York State D O S has recently adopted a supplement to the building code that specifically addresses battery storage. The planning board specifically notes that its grant of any S U permit and site plan approval cannot yet take place without the grant of outside agency permits, including but not limited to the DEC, which may result in changes to the site plan. For purposes of this negative declaration, the planning board notes that any final detailed designs and equipment selections shall be in compliance with this building code supplement effective July first of this year, two thousand nineteen. In the event that the I F C twenty twenty-one fire code in regards to battery storage facilities is published in draft or final form prior to the grant of the S U and site plan approval as well as a building permit application, the final facility design plan shall be prepared in compliance with the I F C twenty twenty-one fire code. The planning board will coordinate with the Colanham Fire Department again prior to granting S U and site plan approval in order to ensure that any pre-construction training that may be needed shall take place at this time as well as scheduling post-construction site visits or training. Impacts on planning and zoning, growth of community character. The use has been determined by the building inspector to be a public utility installation pursuant to section seventy dash ten dash E dash sixteen. And it has further been determined that the section of proposed utility line running parallel to seventeen K and next to the Central Hen- Hudson substation does not constitute a transmission line. The use requires both a special use permit and site plan approval from the planning board. Okay. Because the site is located in the IB district directly fronting on a state highway, the planning board evaluated section eighty twenty to determine if any of the proximity prohibitions apply to the use. There will be no outs- outdoor storage or equipment yard for contractor, contractors, no fuel oil storage and no storage yard or public utility storage yard associated with a public utility use. The structural elevations show no, show no garage doors for commercial uses along the street furniture area of the lot. Compliance with landscaping requirements have been addressed. Routine exterior operational lighting is not needed at the site because affiliate, the facility is unstaffed. The architectural design of the component structures is limited by the nature of the use and specifically the need to mount the, uh, air conditioning units on the roof of K C E New York two and incorporate the seven-foot parapet on four sides in order to help block the noise from the units. Prevents having a pitch roof on a, on a large building. Visualizations and building elevation submitted by the applicant show that the installation will be compatible and the structures will be required to be built in accordance with such submittals. Other impacts, the use, the question will generate no schoolchildren, but will generate tax ratables for the town, school district and other taxing districts. No other potentially harmful impacts were identified, according to the planning board as directed that a negative declaration be adopted. Any discussion board? Entertain a motion to adopt a negative declaration? By Rose, seconded by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll get your copy.
Yep. And, uh, just on those administrative approvals, you know, I'll work with Attorney Hoyt in, in the town to make sure we have everything lined up, correctly identify what those are and then potentially.
Yeah, you need your, you need your approvals before we do your final.
Yeah, so.
You got your neck decks, so you can go to that point.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. You too, thank you. Okay, next this evening, we have, um, Felizy Ridge Road, S U permit, site plan, continuation of public hearing.
Hi. Hi, um, Eric Crokey with Hudson Lines.
Okay, um, last we met, there was, you needed to meet with the, the fire department in regard to access.
Yes.
You could explain how you made out?
Uh, there was two, two minor changes that they were.
Okay.
One was a door, a man door on the back of the building, just as a secondary exit for firefighters and a knock box. They were okay with the, the turning movements and everything within the site.
Yeah, um, and I believe we have a, a sign off from the fire department on that. We got a letter.
Yeah, I think we got a copy of that.
Yeah, okay, so we're all set. Um, thank you. This is a continuation of the public hearing. Is, um, anyone here have a comment or a question on Felizy? Okay, board, any comments or questions? I think we were in pretty good shape. Okay, um, I'll like to entertain a motion then to close a public hearing on Felizy.
Just one quick question. Is there any intention to, something by the property, uh, if you just need higher section between the wetlands at that point?
No, it's, uh, both those wetlands are DEC wetlands, so it'll be very difficult to, to get back there.
Is that something you should have on the map?
Yeah, there, there was access there maybe, but they, they've done, also DEC regulated that. Um, motion was by John, seconded by Rose. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. You can sit down and get my. All right, just bear with me, please. All right, just bear with me, please. I just can include this one. Yeah. Do you guys want to con- Leslie's got it. All right, this is, um, negative declaration for Felizy, special use permit and site plan approval for proposed building for contractor's office and storage. Determination, please take notice that according to the provisions of six N Y C R R Part 617.7. The Town of Montgomery Planning Board acting as lead agency for an unlisted action involving uncoordinated secret review, having reviewed and considered an environmental assessment form and plan for the proposed use, has determined that the action is cited and described below will not have an adverse impact on the environment and the planning board has therefore adopted a resolution to this effect, naming the project as Felizy Special Exception Use Permit and Site Plan. It's I-1 Zone. It's an unlisted action and uncoordinated review. Project description, background and reason supporting the neg deck. Pete Felizy has requested a special exception use permit and site plan approval for a small contractor's storage building containing an office, truck maintenance and storage space within a lot in the I-1 district. The property is the last lot on the east side of Ridge Road next to the I-84 Highway right of way. Initially, the application was for a proposed 3,600 square foot building, but the applicant- but the application and plan was later modified to propose a 3,840 square foot building. The building is to contain approximately 500 square feet of office space with the remaining 3,340 square foot feet for truck maintenance and equipment storage. The site consists of a total of 22.056 acres and incorporates portions of D E C freshwater wetland W D 45 on the site, flagged and certified by the D E C. Based upon reviews of submitted plans and materials, site visits, comments by the Port Professionals, input from other agencies, the completion of a public hearing and a review of the submitted E A F, it has been determined that the project will have no significant adverse environmental impact. The following shall serve as a board's evaluation of potential environmental concerns. Impacts on land. The site consists of upland and wetland areas that are primarily wooded undeveloped, undeveloped land. The proposed disturbance that would result from the plan involves less than an acre of clearing and grading to construct the building. Because of the small amount of disturbance, no SWIP was required, is required, but erosion control and stabilization measures are incorporated into the plan and have been reviewed and found acceptable by the planning board engineer. Soil tests for the septic design system were witnessed by the planning board's engineers' office and shown- and showed excellent percolation rates and more than sufficient depth to groundwater bedrock. There is no need for rock removal or blasting because of the small amount of grading and clearing needed for the action. No significant adverse impacts are expected in the area of land disturbance. Impact on water. A portion of the Tin Brook with associated regulated state wetland areas and floodplain lies in the eastern part of the state. Uh, two segments of the D E C freshwater wetland W D 45 are located on the site and have been flagged and are boundary certified by the D E C. The plan involves no toxic or hazardous materials being stored on the site. Based on preceding considerations, there will be no significant adverse impact on water resources. Impact on traffic, traffic safety and transportation. The site is proposed to be served by a single new driveway to Ridge Road, which is a town road. The applicant has five employees and operates five small bucket trucks, all of which are taken home by employees at night and not left at the site. So the site generates minimal traffic near the end of the road. Employees leave the site at 7:00 A M. Truck turning rate I have been shown to be adequate. The applicant must obtain a road opening permit from the town highway department. Impact on plants and animals. D E C's environmental resource mapper indicate that the site was sensitive for Indiana bats. There are several large trees on the site that may be suitable maternity roost trees and as noted in the site description, the property is wooded. For the area of the site that does require clearing, the work will be undertaken during a hibernation period for the bats and a restriction is so noted on the plan. The plans incorporate screening vegetation as required by the zoning law in order to protect and retain large, existing large healthy trees along the site's road frontage. Proposed landscaping plantings will be planted in such a way as to incorporate existing such trees. Impact on agricultural resources. The site is not located in an act district, nor it is a but any other parcel that is located in an act district. Impact on aesthetic, historic and archaeological resources. D E C's environmental resource mapper indicated potential archaeological sensitivity and a Phase 1A and 1B study was completed for the site. On July 12th, 2019, New York State O P R H P issued a no effect letter finding that no archaeological and/or historical resources will be impacted by the action. The planning board has determined that the applicant's building elevations comply with the town's architectural design guidelines for this small structure, which will have a pitched roof and is in a relatively isolated location on a dead end road. The lighting complies with the town's requirements and has been approved by member Kelvin. No signage is proposed according to further consideration is needed. Impact on open space and recreation. The proposed plan creates no new residential uses and therefore generates no new demand for recreation with no adverse impacts in the subject area. Town of Montgomery contains no critical environmental areas. Impacts on planning and zoning growth or community character. The site is located in the I-1 industrial district and is surrounded on three sides of the I-1 districted land and an interstate highway on a fourth side. The proposed use falls under Section 70-10-E-3 as a contractor's office and storage area. The building shall be constructed in substantial accordance with the rendering as approved. No building or pole mounted signage is proposed. Impact on energy, noise, odor, air quality or public health. The building will not result in any significant increase in energy demands. Site clearing, preparation and construction will result in temporary short-term localized noise impacts, but this will be screened significantly due to the trees that are being retained and planted on the site. And the parcel to the north is wooded and unused at this time. The Colanham Fire Department has reviewed the proposed plan and has met with the applicant and his engineer regarding fire department access needs. To meet these needs, there will be a knock box installed on the building with an egress door to be located on the rear of the building within a proposed fenced-in area. This will ensure that the site is safely accessible to emergency services and the mailboxes on the site driveway will have clearly marked 9/11 addressing. The plans will be revised to incorporate these changes as well as other revisions needed to satisfy outstanding comments from the consultants as a condition of plan approval. Other impacts. No other impacts were identified. Accordingly, the planning board has declared that a negative declaration be adopted. Any discussion, Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to state that the lighting plan here is exquisite. It is the smoothest. We started out with a low level of illumination. We've got very good minimum levels and it is the finest plan that I have ever approved sitting on this board from the lighting stand.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, so entertain a motion to adopt the neg deck. So John, seconded by Rich. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I believe with one motion, we can grant approval with the conditions as noted, no negative neg deck.
Andrew, you have three minor comments, which are-
Yes.
Yeah, it's minors.
Okay.
The other thing in the neg deck, and Rose reminded us about the landscaping will be maintained for the life of the use.
Yep. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to grant site plan approval and a special exception use permit with those conditions as noted. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Rose. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Would you help me, all set?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next this evening we have 915 Route 17K. If you're sending the applicant's Larry Marshall. How are you, Larry?
Good, how are you this evening?
Good.
We have received the, the town engineers' comments and are working on the alterations.
Okay.
They mainly concern to the entrance. We do have an outstanding traffic comment regarding the truck turn diagrams and some out of the site.
Okay.
We'll work on that as well. We're working with the chap and told you those. Jay, if you want to go to sheet two.
So the last revision that we made were, was the addition of the fire access drive.
Okay.
You can use that mouse and on the-
So we added the access drive off of Bracken Road.
Okay.
That we discussed with the Fire Department. Uh, there were some comments at the work session regarding the need or at the last meeting for the desire to have it gated as well as the proposed well to be relocated slightly to be a little bit further away from the driveway. Uh, we take no exception to either of those comments or any of the comments that we've received regarding the access drive modifications to the same. Yeah, and then as well as the town engineers' comment regarding the cover over top of the pipe will respond to that as well.
Okay.
We are still waiting for comments regarding the lighting and landscaping, which we haven't seen any yet from either of the town's consultants.
Okay.
We look forward to receiving those. I think that summarizes the kind of publicity where we really stand at this time.
Larry, I just got the plane now, so I'll get you comments.
Sure.
We'll get on Karen and get your comments also on the new plan. The mic on?
This microphone is on.
Yeah.
Just get it closer, it can't hear, that's all.
All right, I guess that does it for the updates. It's the new set of plans we've had a couple of weeks now, I think?
Yes, this is the new set of plans. This shows the driveway access, the emergency access off of Bracken Road. As we discussed.
With the Fire Department?
Yes.
Okay.
It does not show as a, it does not show the gates or the bollards.
Right.
But those will, those will be added in the next revision.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, this is a continuation of a public hearing, so we'll welcome public comment and questions on 915 17K.
Hi, I'm Sue Reicher.
Hi, Sue.
So I just guess one of the things that keeps coming back to me is the quality of light that this will offer for our neighborhood. And I was just thinking about it because Orange County really has no public transportation system, which I know has been consistently been an issue in the county and I know they're working on it. So most of the people that are going to apply for these jobs and work at this facility are not going to be local residents. So it just increases the emissions that are coming in and it's going to affect us, but it's also going to affect the school. You know, those children play outside. They have outside time. They have soccer games there. They have all kinds of things. So it's just going to affect the quality of the air that we're going to breathe there. Not to mention, I guess, the noise, which is another issue which I've always been concerned with. And also the wetlands. I know that we don't actually share a property line with them, but in the back, we're 150 feet away from Skubitsky's property line. So Albert's, I think his name is, now owns the old Moore's property. So that's back there. But I am concerned with that wetland area because that property sits up and I don't know with all these parking lots and everything, how, what, can we really say that this fuel that leaks this whatever from the parking of the vehicles is not going to go down that hill into those swampy areas? So they, that swampy area, I think I've said that before, goes all the way over to probably Collin Road. It just keeps going, that, that wetland. The light, is it going to affect our night sky? I think we know it's going to affect the night sky, but just the lights all night long is an issue again. And noise, but it's going to affect the value of our homes as well. Another thing that came up that I hadn't really thought about was what if there was an evacuation? What if there was a real problem? That Bracken Road in 17K certainly couldn't accommodate all the workers' cars as well as the tractor trailer trucks and people that would need to leave at that time. I mean, Bracken Road is not in good shape as it is to accommodate just the regular traffic that's going through. The other thing is, like I said, we're 150 feet away from them. It's my understanding they would have to locate our wells as well, our well as well as Albert's well because we're within that 200 feet. Now, so we sit down and I know they've offered a berm on the west side, which I thanked before, but I don't know how far it's going to actually go back. I just wanted to mention that all of our trees from, that are on, that we look at, I think I showed you that picture, they're going to lose their leaves soon. So we see that whole thing completely clear. So I just want to make sure that we have enough coverage of that berm.
I'd like to show you.
Sure.
So in addition to the berm along Bracken, along 17K.
Right.
This berm will be added between your properties up here adjacent to the Albert property. So there's the berm here that would be completely aligned to build up those spots. Then you have the large area in the back where the landfill is going to have. That remains as it is with the operations and the forest green. So that should, that should screen the majority of the rain a lot more. The only portion that's not bermed between the proposed construction and the warped up, we're going to, our property would be a small thousand square foot office building. But that, that's approximately 150 feet. Is the wetland, wet and buffer which we're not controlling. So all the vegetation is drawn from the property line out about 150 feet. Obviously, it varies, but all that will remain. That answers your question.
And so that's basically what I was thinking about.
Okay.
I just think the zoning changes in, in something like this, kind of like a slipper slope. Why don't you start accepting all the zoning changes with, like, the zone that's already there is a slipper slope. Thank you so much.
Yep. Anyone else?
Get close to that microphone.
Good evening, Board.
Thank you.
I know she was a hocus. Um, one thing I'd like, I don't know if you can pull up, I think it's the next to the last one. It shows all the added roost trees along 17K, the actual-
14.
14.
14.
14. Fourteen.
Fourteen.
I was going to bring the mic. I think you see it up there too. It's a concern that I have. When you examine this and you look at it as, I actually did kind of look at it and I only just picked it up. So it's just a concern. In section 1405033-6 states that plantings must be installed so that when a mature height, they don't not, they do not reach any overhead wires on the site. When I examine this, and if you get to look at that, you're going to see the utility line. And I do believe that if you look at it, starting from lot two warehouse, coming east, you'll start seeing where the utility line, at least by the graphic, start inferring that they're within the utility line area. Now, spruce trees grow 30 to 90 feet near homes typically and have 20 foot wide. And it can be up to 30 feet in the wild width. And I'm just curious, has anybody picked that up? Now, I know board member, Mr. Kelly, who worked for Central Hudson, as did my father as a matter of fact. And I know when I looked up Central Hudson, they require 30 to 150 feet in their easements. So I don't know, you know, if that's onside to each side. But if you do look at that and that's, it's just a concern and I can try to point it out to you if you wish. I continue there, but on the seventeen K side, which is here, you'll see right here in the thing, there's this line comes in and you see they're inferred to the trees. And actually the trees stop being doubled here and become two singles by a little more than 50 feet, using the fact that each tree is a 25 foot off center. And then this is where the power lines actually dispersed, back across seventeen K towards shady lawn and on. But if you look closely, if you were able to blow up that area, you'll see where these trees actually begin to, at least in the depiction and the drawing, start coming across those utility lines. Now, that's a concern for, you know, one, the fact that we're not supposed to involve ourselves within those utility lines on full maturity. And the other thing is, is when Central Hudson comes down and they determine that the overgrowth, now they're going to start hacking those trees and there goes the whole purpose of that screening. So I'm not quite sure along seventeen K how deep that right of way is, but I mean, they have a right of way in the front of my yard and it takes quite a bit of my front yard on that right of way. So you're not allowed to, you know, put anything there that would inhibit their access to clean those trees. So I, I just noticed that and I, I know it's just something, but it brings about a concern because we've made progress as far as the four season a year screening. And now I have some concern that in trying to do that, because of the size of the warehouse and how close it is to seventeen K, that that might become an issue with Central Hudson.
Probably just for location of the trees.
Back further, so they, they're not.
Yeah, they'll have to stay, the stems right now are probably five to eight feet inside the property from the power line, from the overhead electric line. That dark line that you see, the dark blue line, that's the right of way line. That's the boundary of the road.
Right, seventeen K's boundary.
Is that correct Larry?
I'm sorry.
The, the dark blue line is at the. Okay, so the boundary line then would be the dark line.
That's right. And then you look at the UL, which is inside of that, which is where the utility lines are there.
Yeah.
If you follow that utility line up, you'll see where various trees, at, at least in the, in the graphic, they do appear, and I know they go narrower, but on full growth.
Yeah, that probably 10 or 12 trees is going to, it's going to be under, underneath.
Very close to, and probably they come along and they go.
Yeah, you know, in five or 10 years they'll probably try to trim them. So that would be smart to move them back.
What's the center line distance between the power line and the tree, center of the tree?
I can't really tell on this, but if the trees are 25 feet apart, I would say from the wire to the center of the tree, yeah, it's five to six feet maybe.
Right, it's, it's 25 feet I measured from here using the scale, but it was a little more than 25 feet this way, which is fine. But like I just noticed, as you can see along this line, it, it ended up like, I just happened to see it. I walked the street on the highway, kind of looked up and went, uh-oh.
What kind of trees are we getting here?
Those are blue spruce. Yep, those are blue spruce. Somewhere I'm worked and I can't quite determine who they are.
Are they blue or are they Norway?
Uh, they're blue according to what. Unfortunately, I don't have my map, but if you go to the far end, to this end.
No.
This is Norway, that's the PAM, is Norway, Norway. Then the PPM, I think, starts becoming your blue spruce, as though you got it over there. So you can, it's just the difference in the.
Okay.
And like, actually that's what I first got quote unquote, because when I started looking at the legend, I'm going, oh my God, the Norway spruce, they can go 40 and 50 feet wide. And I saw the line, I'm thinking, but I did see that blue spruce, which are about 10 feet less than yours. But yes, Mr. Kelly.
Central Hudson will not allow those trees to get. That's crazy, I mean, if they were 20 feet away, they might be trimmed. So you've got to take that into consideration.
Which is where I, I looked and like I said, you know, I've seen them along. So I, again, I don't know how close they can get to the building or how close their berm is because that would be kind of redesign of that berm.
Right.
And that would also limit the accessibility behind that, a little bit maybe for firefighting. They're a consideration, I just thought, on observation, okay? Now, I'm going to refer to Ms. Rickard's statement. If you also can go along into the westerly edge of the property where you will see lot one and lot three of the depiction for the screening.
We're still on landscaping, Sharon?
Yes, sir, yes, thanks. And she kind of stated it. Now, I was looking and referencing zoning law 99, which was required for transitional yards and screening. I know much of you are familiar, I just want to cover it. In 1990-10, in order to ensure the orderly and compatible relationship between residential agricultural and residential districts with business or industrial, along their common boundary line, the following requirements shall be met, and it shall, not may. So we know this has to be done. The minimum required transitional side and, excuse me, rear yards within non-residential districts adjoining the ag and residence shall be four and I three is 50 feet. My concern is I noticed the view shed buffer to the west ceases to exist at, in south of the proposed lot three building. The project on lot one of being a much higher elevation and the whole area is higher than the elevations to the residence to the west. Those will, once the deciduous trees have gone, they will have full view of each and every one of these warehouses, be it lot one, lot two, or even the small commercial business on lot three that's been proposed. Now, there's a requirement that those are all supposed to be screened on the side, according to what I just read in the zoning law. And it shall, is the word, there is a distance between those residences to the west. But again, because of the elevation of not only the land being at a higher elevation, but the buildings, be it whether it's lot one, two, or three, higher elevation. And there are not fir trees in between. So again, they're running into a similar problem, which is what she was speaking to, as we do with a four season coverage. So as soon as this November begins and the trees are gone, they will have full vision of this area. And I've kind of walked that area and looked up and kind of realized that too. So I believe that evergreens should be placed along there for the same purposes. And there is no remediation at all because what happens is, is you do come into the remediation zone for the landfill. And as you get down towards lot one, the border of the property zone that separated lot one and two from lot three runs almost directly along that driveway. So lot one technically has no area to remediate. On top of that, I feel there becomes a complexity with you examine it more fully because what happens is, is we can say because lot one is abutting lot three, it becomes lot three's responsibility for that screening. Did I make sense there? I don't want to confuse you. So now we have forced lot three to pay for and to mitigate for screening. And there is no room for screening unless you go into the remediation area. In section 1990-1020, a minimum required screening within the required transitional side and rear yards may be a six foot high stockade tight fence or equal to be erected and maintained by the non-residential property owner along the side and rear property lines provided. However, that the transitional yard area is more than 50 feet or more, such screening may be the plantings and in its six feet wide, eight feet high, stockade fence may be substituted with evergreen screening and much of this you know. And parking and or building storage areas may not be located within this transitional area. And we know they're not going to put it in the wetland. 1405033 for the site layout says setbacks for material collector roads, outside storage, parking, landscaping requirements. And part B says parking shall be located at the side or rear yards and front yards of the private commercial access drive. All parking and circulation areas shall be shown on the approved site plan, which it is. Truck parking and circulation shall take place only on the designated areas of the approved plan, which it is. But then it says, and it shall be screened as needed in order to avoid hazardous circulation, adverse visual impacts, noise vibration to adjacent usage, and avoid adverse visual impacts to any public roadway. So with all that being said, technically lot one needs screening. The parking lots technically need screening because we're talking only seasonal coverage at a higher elevation. And then that falls to lot three because they're the ones who own the land, but that's in the remediated area. And then you hit the wetlands. So I feel there's a quandary here in order to do due diligence and justice for those people who are to the west. And on top, I'll go beyond because I'm almost done. This is what we have to show us what it's going to look like. I know this is in black and white. The colors are forest green, greenish bisque, and olive. Is this really all it's going to look like? Because we had said, you know, we kept misstating architectural renderings, but really what we wanted was an artistic rendering. And that was not really ever been done. I think it's important for all us, maybe it will help relieve some of our aggravation with appearances and impact to the community. Because when you get into the backend of the zoning law, and you're all familiar with this, I'm just saying it for public record. When you get into the architectural and such requires of non-residential, they talk about Montgomery being one of the earliest settlements, the type of development in the town, and that it's not the intention, of course, to inhibit new and innovative architecture. However, it is important to remember new and old designs must be compatible. New buildings should include architectural elements of the vernacular, which we could talk about, the size and massing of buildings, and design correctly around the area. But what it, most important, I think, what it says is, commercial and office buildings with multiple uses or tenants should be designed, which we know various ways of discriminating between those uses. But it also says, large box-like structures are not indigenous to Montgomery and should not be used except in an industrial park and distribution center areas. New buildings for either single use or multiple design should break up the box through various design tools. Well, this is not a business park, it is an I three, it is a general industry area. So that's just some highlights for me tonight. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else? Nine fifteen seventeen K, yes Susan?
I shared, Sharie, that was great. I was going to say the same thing. There's no like design guidelines in place and there's no picture. Is this going to be like a shiny building or a metal building? Or that fantastic thing that you have behind your house? How's that working out? The berm with that giant thing?
This is what we were getting.
Huh? Okay, it's a warehouse, all right. So I just think it's a shame that these people have to come up here and give you all this painstaking detail that they're doing because they're worried about their lives, their investment, what they love about their homes. And there's no design guidelines. And you could put design guidelines in so that when things are so close to a residential property, there's a nice interface and you don't have to go through this. It's horrible. And I think the biggest horrible example is what they did in the back of your house. That berm and that thing up on the hill, that's hideous. There should be design guidelines and you should all be asking for them and studying them and bringing them in and saying, hey, let's get this on the books. This is horrible, all these warehouses, horrible.
Anyone else?
Cory?
Hi, good evening.
Hi Cory.
Back again. Just a couple of things that she just talked about the trees and I was curious and maybe you'll answer it, but the first thing I just want to say is, I appreciate what the lawyer had said last time here about this water thing that should not be on the website. You should go look at the subdivision law, which I think Ms. Batson said it was in the paper, local law five of 2012 for the town subdivision regulations. So I went looking for that, only to find that it's another little nit, something wrong because it's local law three. Took me a while to figure it out. There was no local law five. That's just, again, pointing out little inconsistencies in paperwork, but I got it.
We have a book with the new subdivision regs, that's what you should look at.
Right, which is, I believe, is it the local law of, I guess, three of 2012?
It's our new subdivision regs, whatever that is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the subdivision, I did look up the water part and if there is a clause that says that the town board may require the wells to be drilled and tested, that is true. But it also says that the applicant shall locate, since section one, shall locate and identify on a proposed plot all existing wells within 200 feet of the out of boundaries to be subdivided, which is what I believe Ms. Rickard was saying. Has that been done? I guess that's my next, did, have they been identified for 200 feet of the boundaries of the land to be subdivided as stated in the subdivision rules?
Larry, do you have any answer for that?
Okay, but that's, that's in the new law that I, I read. You can look at that, that's what a section M shall be located and identified. And of course, the town zoning law, as you know, 30 dash 10 to 30 says shall means it is mandatory to do. Also, the trees that were, were being brought up in the subdivision regulations, I, I am confused, so maybe you can clarify. Section two, the subdivision in the law, street trees planted must be warranted for two years from the time of planting. The developer shall replace these trees that are at least 25% dead or appear to be. they?
Perpetuity.
Okay.
This is a site plan, so that's different. This would be street trees along the street in a subdivision.
Okay.
This is plantings as part of a site plan.
Okay.
As long as they have that use there, they have to take care of the landscape.
Okay. That's, that was the question because I saw in the planning book, like you said, for construction, section one forty dash fifty dash thirty-three, it says it must maintain for the life of the use.
Correct.
So I didn't understand why the law was saying two years and...
Street trees.
Well, it is a street.
For residential homes.
No, that's, it's, yeah, that's for residential homes in a subdivision like where you live.
Yeah, I thought I read, okay, I thought I read something about street trees or anything including roads.
Corey, it doesn't matter. We're maintaining them in perpetuity.
You're going to maintain them in perpetuity.
All right. So it doesn't matter.
Okay. And I guess the, so lot three, that we, I guess you're satisfied according to the subdivision that lot three, I know it's kind of maybe come back in front of the planning board or whatever, which is approved, but it's said, Article four, section one, all lots could be sold upon approval of subdivision, a planned demonstration that a usable building site with related facilities and safe adequate access for all lots must be prepared. So I guess you're, you're okay with that for lot three.
Any use on lot three would be done here?
Because it, it says that it has to be for the approval, even if it is noted not for development purpose at this time or for not for development purpose without planning board approvals regardless of lot size. So that's also Article four, section one. And I guess the last thing, I was just curious about, find out in the law. You didn't answer, yes, okay, speak to you, now you answered that? I'm sorry, I did. Oh, just my own curiosity, is this considered a major subdivision or a minor subdivision?
It's what?
Minor.
Minor. Because I thought a major subdivision according to the law says, any subdivision not classified as a minor subdivision, including but not limited to subdivisions of five or more lots, which we know it's not, or any sized subdivision requiring in new street, which it doesn't, or extension of town facilities. Are we not extending our sewer into there? Are we not extending our water's portable supply into that?
No. Environmental services.
Okay. So it's not an extension of town facilities?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know, that's.
Okay.
You guys pointed me to the law, I started reading it, and that's why I have a question. Thank you.
Karina?
Hi. Good evening. After the last planning board meeting, sorry, Karina, it's up to, after the last planning board meeting, where Corey started to speak about the wells and the proximity to the landfill, I think you guys know I'm an environmental engineer, and I do work in, on sites remediation sites with closed landfills often. So one thing that I thought that, following the discussion last time, that had to do with it being the county health department's responsibility for confirming that the water is safe to drink, and the D C being in charge of the inactive closed landfill, which I think is still a big gray area, I haven't, like, I don't think we really understand the closure of that landfill and if, what's going on with the groundwater. And I didn't, I kind of struggled with whether or not to talk about this because I don't want to be reactive, but the chemical compounds P F O A and P F O A, P F A S, you know, they're really in the news right now topically, especially because of the contaminated water sources in Newburgh. Because of the proximity of this landfill to neighbors who are relying on groundwater for drinking water, I think it is, it's definitely something of concern. So I did a little, I had five minutes of Google searches because I, I mean, I have my own close that have landfills to work on, so I didn't want to spend too much time on this one. But there have been some preliminary investigations performed, particularly with respect to inactive or closed landfills in New York State. I just printed out a couple of pieces of information in case you are curious, which I'll hand to you, and I can email also if you'd like to have it electronically.
Yeah, email it to me.
Okay. But basically, this one article is from May twenty eighteen. It says the D C's, this is specifically, this was a news source that is north of here, so it's specific to Columbia County, Green County, conducting preliminary investigations into possible contaminants of twenty-six inactive landfills in Columbia County, twenty-seven inactive landfills in Green County. At the date of this article, May twenty eighteen, they had only tested one in April. So this is a big scope, a large scope of investigation that the D C is undertaking, and you can see how they're, they're not, they were not able to move very quickly. And a lot of that is because they have to focus so much on the immediate health issues that are present at whose or calls in the paper. There's also an article up here, this is a EPA research brief, this has, it's titled "Analysis of New York State Landfills as Sources of PFOS Groundwater Contamination," and it states that "The New York State Department of Health is in unique position to characterize landfill attributes linked to release of PFOS in the environment, potentially resulting in human exposure. PFOS data have already been collected of sixty-two inactive landfills and nineteen active landfills with sampling of many more landfills planned." And I just wanted to bring this to your attention because I don't know if it is enough to rely on the county health investigating if PFOS is present, understanding the state has asked for this data to be collected at this stage in the game. Infrastructure and water in Montgomery is a hot topic right now. A lot of businesses want water in Montgomery, and we're unable to provide that to them. We're unable to provide water to our, the businesses that are currently here, reliable quantities of water that they, that they need and that they, we can treat after they've used it. So like, having a site where they're able to provide their own water is great, but not if it causes a danger to the adjacent residents. Because as, as we've heard before from this board, this is a, a unique situation with business industrial zoning in the middle of a residential area. It was carted out to become industrial in the middle of a residential area. So like I said before, I don't want to be reactive, but this is a C and D landfill. PFOS is found in not just firefighting homes, which is what we found in Newburgh, it's also anything that has to do with waterproofing, non-stick products, industrial applications like waxing and other coatings that have been used, cleaning products. We, I don't, I don't know it's a landfill. And in my experience with those landfills, you never know what's a landfill. So having some monitoring was on site is a great benefit to us, and I just wanted to bring this to your attention.
Okay. You know that this is still under the state's monitoring guidelines, and it will be for a while yet.
Yeah, and I, I guess to that point also, I do work on some state superfund sites in my professional life, and the state has been pretty aggressive in reaching out to state superfund sites and requiring the responsible parties to collect PFOS sample, analytical data for PFOS, not just in groundwater but also on soil. So they are handling that very aggressively at the state superfund level, but I'm not personally familiar with how they're handling unsolved subdivision. Thank you.
Yes, Todd?
Fred, just one thought, though, you used that word perpetuity, that's, that's an awful long time, right?
To the length of the...
Yeah, it's a long time. Who's going to be in charge of that? Who's going to be responsible for that?
Whoever owns the property.
Who owns it now?
Privately owned, correct?
Okay, so the turnover when they sell it to somebody else?
Their responsibility. It goes with the line.
Okay, not the tenants?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes?
This is my first planning board meeting. We always have fireboard meetings.
And your name?
Joe Keenan, I live on Berry Road. How are you? So this may have been asked, but like I said, it's my first planning board meeting, and my concern, and you might not even be the right board, but it's, the big trucks coming out, Rockin Road, want to turn right, and I've witnessed it, and this is my first opportunity to say anything, and they go in the wrong lane to make that turn. So my concern is if there's more trucks, not just with this project, and one on the docket later, can there be anything done to make them go the other way? Because you can't widen that road, the bridge is there, there's a blind spot coming over the hill with the old railroad tracks.
Sure.
And it's, and I've witnessed it, and you know, we go to accidents there if our department goes, and fortunately, we haven't had, you know, a head-on with a tractor trailer, but the increased traffic, that's going to be dangerous. I mean, you know, turning left's dangerous too there because you got people coming over to blind, and the truck thinks it's clear. It's just, like I say, I don't know, maybe it has to go to town board, and they got to do, I'm sure they're going to do traffic study with all this stuff, but the reality is, you're there, we're not going to know it. Good, I believe you. But it, no, no, you're not there yet.
No, no, we've already agreed with this board to send...
And I thank you for that. But as I said, maybe my issue is with the town board because there's businesses there that are doing that, and it's dangerous. And I, I'm tempted to sit out there with my little video camera across the street, and I'll just pile them up, and I'll give them to whoever the right people are, and unfortunately, I don't know who that is, but I thank you for your time.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're required to go the other way, outdoors to a rate. And I know that they don't. It's more of an enforcement issue.
Okay. So it's already... Because we tell them... It's already required then for them?
Already required when it leaves here. It's required, the signage is there for them, left turn only, or right turn only out of here.
Well, I won't mention it, but it's always the same trucking company.
Yeah.
I won't mention it here.
Some of the uses on the rock are pretty dated, that's a condition, so it's only the applicants that come in front of the board that see that condition.
All right, maybe that's something the town board can fix. Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, we know we have some things to work on, but I think we've taken a lot of public comment on this. We have a long list to go through, and we appreciate all of that. With all that said, I'll entertain a motion. We're not granting any approvals tonight or doing anything, we'd just like to close the hearing. Motion by Jay, seconded by Bill. All who are in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Yep. Next this evening is McDonald on Beamer Road, representing the applicant, Ross Wolden Davis. How are you, Ross?
Good evening. Good evening. For the record, Ross Wolden Davis, engineering survey properties here on behalf of Ronald and Melissa McDonald for a closed two-lot subdivision on Beamer Road. This is just, just west of Deckard Drive by maybe a thousand feet. Mr. McDonald currently lives in the existing residence shown on two. He's proposing another house as we move into on lot one with a new well, step幅 driveway, joint site inspection this week. Here's office, first desk for your goods, or if there's others. This week would be tests. Maybe there's a problem with your application.
Yeah, this is just a presentation. He's moving into the new lot?
That's my understanding. I'm here tonight. There he is.
Oh, hi, Ronald.
How are you? Ronald and Lois McDonald, how are you?
Good, good.
I plan on living there.
Okay, good.
I'm downsized, getting old, can't walk up and down anymore, got two metal hips, you, you're not a drill.
Yep, very good.
And I don't need all the bedrooms, my children have moved out, and I did some relations. I missed them, I wish they did. So house is empty. So that's all I want to do is move next door.
Good question, Bill. This is, this is R A two, correct, Ross?
Yep.
R eight point five, so it's two acre zoning. Yeah, there's still some, but there's quite a bit of wetland going to be on lot one, all right? So it would be problematic there, but the old gravel pit wouldn't probably do work yet. There's frontage and everything. Anyway, there's no plan on cutting out another lot now, is there, Ross?
No.
Just a one.
No, it's just, that's where I'm going to be.
Well, you're going to sell the house you're in now. Yeah, no problem. Okay. You had gotten a letter from Schiphol?
Yeah, it came positive on this S D A, so Schiphol, your responsible, sent out follow-up on that, they did come through, concerned regarding potential for archaeological significance of the property. I know the property has been mined in the past.
It went on the old landfill on Lake Osiris Road.
That was disturbing, not interrupting, I moved in there, that had been disturbing.
Harvey sold in there.
Yeah, Harvey sold.
I ran the load in there quite a bit.
Montgomery actually did a lot of, yeah.
That's who we love, the property, it's hard.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, Harvey and Frank. Okay. Anybody else, any questions?
That's on, Ross, that's on the south side of Beamer Road?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, we have comments from our engineer and planner board, we can get them to you tomorrow.
Yeah.
And when you respond to your call, we can stick those in.
All right, any of them significant or is it be appropriate?
I don't think so.
Yes, for sending a public hearing?
Well, yeah, there's some tweaks you need to make, but you have the room to do it. I don't think that there's anything that's to add yet.
In respect to see for, I believe it's unlisted, so you don't have to coordinate review like you would with the type one. Question always is, do you wish to coordinate review, and if so, with whom? And if there's a need to prepare a lead that would be done tonight, then it may not be enough.
Yeah, you'll get us the communication from them.
Yep.
You can address our comments, and maybe look at them first before we decide on it here. Get our comments, please. I think that would be most appropriate.
This is central highway for the new...
I gave it to him.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Mr. McDonald, will you be up, will you probably walk that in the next month or so, just to get an idea? Okay, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah.
Couple of us want to walk the property, maybe Friday.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Do we need to contact you or...
No, you can walk it with me.
Thank you.
Well, like I said, when we originally moved in, it, you know, it was already disturbed, is what it is. I've been living there for at least two thousand and fifty. The driveway has been flagged while my guy was out there standing up to the hill. He did not deal with it.
Yeah.
I think the public could give it away.
Okay.
I guess you may as well stay right there, Ross. You're doing a galaxy also, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, this is just a presentation. He's moving into the new lot?
That's my understanding. I'm here tonight.
Oh, there he is. Oh, hi, Ronald.
How are you? Ronald Lois McDonald, how are you?
Good, good.
I plan on living there.
Okay, good.
I'm downsized. Getting old, can't walk up and down anymore, got two metal hips. You, you're not a drill.
Yep, yeah, very good.
And I don't need all the bedrooms. My children have moved out and I did some, I missed them. I wish they did. So, house is empty. So, that's all I wanna do is move next door.
Good question, Bill. This is, uh, this is RA two, correct, Ross?
Yep.
RA point five, so it's two acres only. Yeah, there's still some, but there's quite a bit of wetland gonna be on lot one, all right? So, it would be problematic there, but the old gravel pit wouldn't probably do work yet. Hard to do anything there. There's frontage and everything. Anyway, there's no plan on cutting out another lot now, is there, Ross?
No.
Just the one.
No, it's just, um, that's where I'm gonna be.
Well, you're gonna sell the house you're in now. Yeah, no problem. You had gotten a letter from Shipholme?
Yeah, it came positive on this SDA. Something Shipholme, your responsible, sent out follow-up on that. They did come through, concerned regarding potential for archaeological significance of the property. I know the property has been mined in the past.
It went on the old landfill on Lake Osiris Road.
That was disturbing, not interrupt when I moved in there, that had been disturbed.
Harvey sold it there.
Yeah, Harvey sold it.
I ran the load in there quite a bit.
Montgomery actually did a lot of, yeah.
Yeah.
That's who we love the property from, it's hard.
Yep, yep, Harvey and Frank. Anybody else? Any questions?
That's on, Ross, that's on the south side of Beamer Road?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we have comments from our engineer planner board. We can get them to you tomorrow. And when you respond to the call and the schedule is.
All right, any significance or is it be appropriate?
I don't think so.
Yes, for setting up public hearing.
Well, yeah, there's some pleasing to make, but you have the room to do it. I don't think that there's anything more to add yet.
It's a secret. I live, it's unlisted, so you don't have to coordinate lead review like you would with the type one. Question always is, do you wish to coordinate review? And if so, with whom? If there's a need to prepare a lead that would be done tonight, then it may not be.
Yeah, you'll get us the communication from them.
Yep.
You can address our comments and maybe look at them first before we decide on it here. Get our comments, please. I think that would be most appropriate. We'll get that too. Okay, thanks, guys.
Mr. McDonald, will you probably walk that in the next month or so, just to get an idea?
No.
Okay, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah.
Couple of us wanna walk the property, maybe Friday.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Do we need to contact you or?
No, you can walk it with me. Well, like I said, when we originally moved in, it, you know, was already disturbed. It is what it is. I've been living there for at least two thousand and fifty. The driveway has been flagged while my guy was out there staying up to the hill. I think the public could give it away.
Okay. I guess you may as well stay right there, Ross. You're doing the galaxy also, correct?
Well, we discussed this briefly, but we're. This is the one that we hold the lead agency coordination and involvement. For that action, we have ordered traffic study and archaeological assessment based upon commission of the board. Findings of.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Any board members on galaxy?
Ross, have you gone out and laid any layup yet, or are you waiting to get things finalized?
Correct. Well, so once the touches finalize, we'll do the great, you know, detailed grading and then we'll.
The access question with the railroad, had you looked, remember what we did with Crestwood?
Yeah, we're looking at doing the private commercial access.
Yeah.
So, that would require a town board approval, so we would need to sort of dedicate a town.
There'll be another one. Yes, Andrew?
When you did the one over, you had the other location, that other crossing. You had the utilities going across where the driveway was. This one, they're separated, didn't you?
Yeah, they would be actually located within the driveway, both sections.
Okay.
Did you notice that Crestwood just got the easements after all this time? I think it's the same rail line?
Yes. So, there, the lift issue, because that was potentially gonna be dedicated to the town as public water sewer proof. So, we needed to secure permanent easement rights that we could grant to the town.
Just interested to talk to you.
Wow, okay. All right, yes.
There's gonna be quite a bit of traffic on this new driveway, just, you know, a hundred feet or so from Zbyski's property. Any coordination? Traffic that's gonna be in effect, most of the time.
Well, any traffic study you do will take into account what was.
In fact, it's being done by Craig Matic of his community.
So, we'll look at it all together. That will be part of it, all these jobs who are late. All right, I guess I'll entertain a motion to declare lead by Rose, seconded by John. All those in favor? If you can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks, Ross. And we got some comments we can get out to you too.
Yep.
Okay, now, let's see. Okay. FedEx Freight, Neely Town Road, amended site plan, parking lot expansion. This is just a presentation. How are you, Dave?
Good, good. Apologize, I didn't get to the presentation board, the floor board to do that overall. Just pretty much the same thing as that, just some, you know. Um, as stated, just a presentation, right? Essentially, this is a project, a one ninety-one Neely Town Road that was completed back in two thousand and one with the secret process through the town, like a DIS and FDIS, and then a statement of findings back in December of two thousand and one. Obviously, the facility has been fully built out per that approval. I shouldn't say fully built out. Two phases were built out, which included the building and then the main parking areas. There was a third phase, including this parking, that was not done at that time, although all the grading was done. There was significant twenty to twenty-five foot fills in that location, and they did all that grading. So, there's a future time they could just come in and pave it, et cetera. This is a forty-two point seven five acre parcel, existing warehouse and about a hundred and ten thousand square feet with a maintenance building and small tooling facility there. There are existing two hundred and four employee parking spaces, mostly out in front, and five hundred and forty-four pub or smaller trailer and van spaces, and a hundred and ninety spaces, loading dock spaces around the facility. This was a previously American freight site. This project, we're adding essentially three areas. There's two, a smaller area and a larger area here, a larger area, smaller area here, and then a large triangle shape over here. In total, it's about four and a half acres of new impervious surface and a total of six point three acres total disturbed area. As I was stating earlier, about two acres was previously planned as phase three of the original documentation. So, in essence, the site plan amendment is really these sites down here and then a smaller area in here. We're adding about seventy trailer spaces, larger spaces, about a hundred and six PUP and van spaces, and eight, just a real small addition out here, just trying to get as many as they could out there, eight employee parking spaces. We have started our due diligence on this. There are two wetlands, one here and one here, which is basically the stormwater management facilities down here. There's a third stormwater management facility, but that drained out and comes around down and discharges the same location down here under the original design. Our design will include bio retention area up here, and another bio retention area up here, and then attenuation as needed by modifying the structures in the existing facilities. We've done the Argo. There was a previous archaeological study done, and it was supplemented by the same firm that did the original. And there were no, no findings or anything. There were, there was a corp, I'm sorry, a federal wetland, corp engineer wetland out here on the side slope. But when we walked it this time, they don't feel that it qualifies as a wetland anymore. Probably does, but the cut was done here at the base of the hill, and the hydrology isn't there anymore. So, that was a concern when we looked at the original documentation, but we went out and walked it to make sure that there wasn't a wetland there anymore. These two wetlands are not gonna be impacted. We're gonna stay outside of the actual limits of that, of those wetlands. And that's basically the long and the short of the project. A lot of this is providing bigger spaces than what's there now, so we are taking quite a few spaces out, making them a little larger, and then adding some space over here for better maneuvering as we come around the end of the building. That's essentially the project in a nutshell. As we, as stated, we did a DIS, FEIS, and that was our firm that did that, so we have the old documentation. And that's what the FEIF that was presented to you was based on.
All right. Board, any questions, comments on FedEx Freight?
Firstly, retaining walls, right?
Yeah, there's gonna be a retaining wall here, here, and this has one round in here, but not on this side. And then, yes, there's a retaining wall down here. There's a lot of earthwork and walls that are gonna happen.
Dave, is this for trailers or just for, I mean, no, no trucks, just for the trailer aspect of it?
Yes, it's basically for the longer trailer parking as well as the, what they call pub, which is a shorter twenty-eight foot of lines.
Right.
And then the vans.
No tractors, it's just?
Well, not tractor, but there will be van spaces, so.
Oh, okay.
Yes. I guess my first, my first question was why? Was the original parking tent or loading, not loading, but storage for these trailers counts underestimated for what the future is now? Is that the reason for the expansion?
Yeah, essentially, I mean, this was planned for, so that was, I mean, part of what we're doing here, part of the numbers was presented in the previous documentation. This out here, as I said, was basically to get better spacing out here. This, this comes around here, and then, you know, they're trying to park here and park here, and there's a lot of congestion in the back.
Yeah.
It's real tight. And then over here, yes, we are adding some additional parking over there. Essentially, they're finding that the, you know, the storage of their trucks is, you know, more frequent than what they had originally anticipated, so.
Yeah, there, I got a memo to the board today, so we'll get that shortly.
Okay.
On the south end, you were pointing out the two wetlands on the south end of the site, adjacent to County ninety-nine.
Right.
When I, when I first looked at the plans, I saw that it was listed as a federal wetland, those two, but also a stormwater detention areas. Normally, the detention areas don't get labeled as, or don't get classified as wetlands because then you can't maintain them, you can't expand them. It makes it too complicated. They, they shouldn't be wetlands. And I was just questioning, are you gonna seek permitting? Are you gonna seek to remove that wetland designation for them? It seems, it seems like a burden.
Well, I mean, we are gonna leave them as, as wetlands. The outlet facilities will be, you know, reduced in size or increased in size as needed to make sure that we accommodate the new regulations. But, yeah, I mean, we're basically gonna let it go wild and just remain natural.
Does any, I, I mean, you don't have to go into the wetlands to change, you can change them drastically by changing those control structures, which will either, more water in there or less, compared to that. Just odd that stormwater facilities are classified as federal wetlands.
Well, they were, there was a, particularly in this side, I don't think it was over on this side in the original, but over here on this side, on the original application, the wetlands were there already. They have expanded a little bit over time, but not significantly on that side. But this one was not classified under the original, and it has been created in some way.
Just for the board, today's standards, you cannot impact stormwater or treat it in a way, period. So, that's why I caught my eye. I just thought it was very odd.
Everything we're adding will be treated before we send it to it. But, I mean, you're right, I mean, all regs basically took care of the first flush by putting it in these two facilities. This was considered a punch bowl, and this was considered a punch bowl, and then this was the attenuation on the original. So, this is where the treatment took place theoretically, and then this was for the overall volume, I don't know, sorry, rate of discharge.
Is any of this stuff our hotspots, or is this?
Yes, yes.
Was back then?
Apparently, yeah.
Cause how old is this facility?
Two thousand and one is when it was originally approved by the findings, so it was under two thousand and one.
Anybody car lot spaces are you adding?
We're adding eight employee and then seventy trailers. But again, I mean, we got ninety-three open here, which was originally planned.
Okay.
So, seventy and then a hundred and six PUP slash van. So, a hundred and seventy-six minus ninety-three.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yes, two questions. Are you gonna have, well, not necessarily more employees, but more traffic needed there? Some kind of amended traffic study or? I'm not sure what you want.
Well, the intent here is to provide more storage on the site as opposed to more volume. Right now, what the developer is telling us is that the volume is basically gonna stay the same. And then we just need more trailer storage spaces on the site. Right now, if you look out there on the aerials, you'll see we have, you know, they have trailers stacked everywhere. They just don't have enough room to, you know, put them right now.
You're talking about the hundred and six, that's a small plans.
Right. PUP is twenty-eight foot lines.
So, they're gonna be in there. I mean, that's new traffic, right? So, coming over from the summer.
Well, they're trailers, so you drop them off and then pick up another one, load one, whatever.
Yes.
I'm just looking at the aerial.
Oh, yeah.
Just have their, they're not parked, they're jammed in.
Yeah. So, those are jammed. The number counts that we provided are the spaces that were shown on the original plans. It's not truly other than the amount like you said.
Okay. You need it for storing the trailers.
Dave, did you go with the lady on this?
Yes, and she's good to you, I believe.
You got it right here.
Yep. And I think, I think there's some discussions on what we need. I'll have her touch basically.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else? Okay, we had some comments for you, we'll get them to you.
Okay. And I assume that the board is still lead agency because it was a FDIS, is that correct, or? Is the board still lead agency or would have to start over or?
Frank, you'll start over.
Okay. I didn't know how you did that with the site plan amendment, so.
Question is, is it in an act district? Cause they were best across the street, still in the act district. They're looking to expand their part.
So, we do, then we'll do.
All right, not across, on the other side of the road.
Okay.
We're looking, we're surprised that properties are still in the act district along ninety-nine, given the development that's happened there in the last twenty years. But if you're in the act district, it's definitely type one with six acres of disturbance. If you're not in the act district, it may possibly not be on the list. So, we're gonna look at that first, Dave.
Yeah.
We'll look at that first, Dave.
But just to clarify, when you say six acres.
Of disturbance.
Right. Even though this was previously planned under the old, and that's like two acres there?
I don't know how long that lasts. Maybe a statute.
It's gonna be eighteen years.
Eighteen years. Stormwater's changed. We better, we better, yeah, rather difficult pressure.
All right, thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Next this evening is Alicia Holdings LLC, ASAP Scrap Recycling LLC, New York State Route two oh eight. SCU permit amended site plan, seek a determination and decision. How are you, Matt?
Good.
Good. And Marissa, how are you? How are you? If you could update us on where we stand today?
So, basically, we've been working with Leslie and preparing the NIC that. We're kind of holding off on addressing all the comments from the previous two comment letters in hopes to get one, well, have all the NIC, all the comments conditional.
One final submission.
Yeah, one final submission. So, they're all pretty much at this point.
Okay. Um, we did close the hearing on this, I think, the last meeting. All right, if you bear with me, you may want to sit down. We have a NACD here, that I'll, I'll give my way through for you, for us, for everyone. This is a negative declaration, Alicia Holdings LLC ASAP Scrap LLC, site planist, special exception use permit determination. Please take notice at according to the provisions of six NYCRR Part 617.7, the Town Montgomery Planning Board acting as lead agency for an unlisted action following coordinated review procedures, having carefully reviewed and considered a short environmental assessment form, plans and other materials. Having visited and studied the site more than once and considered all comments submitted on the application, has determined that the action incited and described below will not have an adverse impact on the environment. And therefore, the planning board has adopted a resolution to this effect. Name a project, Alicia Holdings LLC ASAP Scrap Recycling LLC, SCU Site Plan. Seeker status, unlisted action, coordinated review, zone is an I three. Project description, this project involves a request for site plan approval and a special exception use permit for a second use of the Alicia Holdings LLC site for a recycling facility for scrap metal pursuant to the Town Montgomery zoning law, section 130-40-30.36. Alicia Holdings LLC operates heads-up metal shelving business. And part of its business involves a purchase and recovery of metal shelving from businesses and either reselling or modifying the same for resale while undertaking open storage of the same on the site. It is routine and heads-up operation to generate scrap metal from the aforementioned shelving units, which scrap has been sold to other scrap metal yards. The operator of the business formed ASAP LLC Scrap Metal to operate as a second use of the site, to operate both as a companion with a metal shelving operation in order to retain profits from the metals, the scrap metal generated by heads-up and also has a standalone use to provide the opportunity for the public to recycle scrap metal directly on the site. As a component part of the scrap metal recycling operation, the facility proposes to process vehicles for scrap in addition to other metal items. Background and reasons supporting the negative declaration. Based upon reviews of submitted plans and materials, multiple site visits, analysis by the board's professionals, comments by the board, public and other agencies, review of the submitted EAF and additional material, the planning board has determined that the project will create no significant adverse environmental impact if the project is carried out consistent with this determination and the conditions of approval. The following shall serve as a board's evaluation of potential environmental concerns. Impacts on land. The parcel consists of twenty-seven point two acres of land that is noted in the project description, has been developed since nineteen seventy-nine for industrial purposes. Portions of the existing site at the site perimeters are wooded and are proposed to remain so. The proposed land disturbance is minor, being less than one acre in total and not involving cuts and fills. Erosion and sediment control measures are incorporated into the plans. Impacts on water resources. The planning board carefully considered the matter of potential impacts on water resources, given the site's location above the Walke Hill River and given the concerns for potential contamination of that water course by automotive fluids. The site driveway is partially paved with asphalt to a distance of approximately a hundred and twenty feet to the existing gate, which is to remain. The asphalt driveway segment is to be repaid with permission from DOT and according to the highway right-of-way plan. The applicant's engineer took the step of sending their Industrial Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, or SWIP, to Riverkeeper, which reviewed and commented on the same. And in response to which, the applicant incorporated changes to the plan in his operations plan, for which the applicant will need to abstain, obtain a DEC multi-sector general permit for stormwater discharges from additional activity. In addition, the plan has been reviewed in detail and commented on by the planning board's engineer. As a condition of the municipal land use approvals, the plans will be, will be required to be revised in order to satisfy the comments of the planning board engineer in regard to the installation of check dams within the square. Okay. Overall, the applicant's strict compliance with the operational SWIP, the operations plan, as well as the ongoing operations reporting and record-keeping requirement of the DEC and the DMV will protect important water resources from contamination. This determination will not repeat, will not repeat all of the protective measures that are itemized in the operations plan on which this determination relies, but its reference is incorporated. Impact on traffic, traffic safety and transportation. The added use is a low-volume traffic generator and there are no concerns about the capacity of the existing roadway network and the site driveway to accommodate the site expansion. DOT has reviewed the matter and the paved portion of the driveway that is currently in poor condition is being repaid. And this also includes a repayment of the throat of the driveway where it extends within the DOT right-of-way to intersect with the highway. A chain link fence will separate the two uses so that there is no confusion and users of ASAP Scrap will proceed into that portion of the site and will, and be processed in accordance with the ASAP Scrap Recycling LLC Operations Plan prepared in April of two thousand and nineteen and revised in September two thousand and nineteen. Impacts on plants and animals. The EAF mapper did not identify the site as being in an area containing any species of animal or associated habitats elicited by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered. As noted in the project description, the project site has long been developed and used for industrial purposes, with the original lumberyard, with its access driveway, buildings and most of the gravel areas on the plan having been developed in nineteen seventy-nine. The planning board notes that the proposal involves no disturbance directly adjoining the Walke Hill River and specifically notes that the steeply sloped strip of wooded land west of Route 208 and directly adjacent to the river is not part of the site. Having been separated from the parent parcel as part of the primary residential agricultural parcel in the Walden Estates two L subdivision. Impacts on agricultural resources. The twenty-seven point two acre site does not constitute an agricultural resource as it is developed for industrial purposes and has been so since nineteen seventy-nine. Impact on aesthetic, historic and archaeological resources. The site had been indicated as being archaeological sensitive and both for the prior application for the caretaker residence, as well as for the current land use application, the applicant had completed cultural resource analysis at the direction of the New York State OPRHP. OPRHP has issued a no effect letter on August twenty-first, two thousand and nineteen, concluding that the action will have no effect in this subject area. Impact on open space and recreation. The proposed plan creates no new residential uses and therefore no new demands for recreation or no harmful impacts in that regard. The planning board carefully considered the possibility of noise and visual impacts associated with the operation having a harmful effect on the rail trail. The board notes that it had previously evaluated the visibility of the site as part of the Walden Estates subdivision mentioned above. The applicant had submitted photos from the rail trail showing that the operation will not be visible from the trail. The combination of the eight to fourteen-foot grade differential between the trail and the portion of the site that is to be used for ASAP, coupled with the existing berm on the west side of the nearest portion of the rail trail and the existing overwooded, overwooded area approximately three hundred and thirty foot deep. Extending, pardon?
It's a wooded area over, I just moved forward.
This is wooded over area, okay, proximity. Extending between a bermed rail trail and a scrap, component of the operation all ensure that the scrap operations will be fully shielded from trail users. Noise levels that would be associated with the ASAP operations were also evaluated as relates to the rail trail. Equipment noise from operating ASAP will be shielded from the rail trail by the same factors of topography, berming, vegetation and distance separation that shields the visual impacts of the use. Impacts on critical environmental areas, the Town Montgomery contains no critical environmental areas. Impacts on energy, noise, odor and air quality of public health. The proposed use does not pose any peculiar or excessive energy consumption requirements. Uh, data on noise levels generated by the major equipment to be used on site was provided and evaluated. The applicant also provided decibel readings from other scrap yards with comparable equipment, all being operated simultaneously. Okay, let me see. Based on information provided from these existing operations, on the fact that the closest property line to the machinery is two hundred and forty feet and based on the closest point of the rail trail is separated by over three hundred and twenty feet of wooded land, the planning board determines that the worst-case operational noise, noise levels at any property line will fall below the fifty-seven decibel limit established in the zoning law. Emergency services access in response to the site was evaluated and the Walden Fire Department worked extensively with the applicant to ensure that it would be able to safely and adequately service the site in case of emergency. The applicant has prepared a specific fire department access plan showing fire truck paths and movements on the site as well as a detailed operations plan, which is an integral part of the site submission and a critical tool to protect the public health and safety. Compliance with this operations plan is an ongoing condition of planning board approval. In order to mark the areas to be kept cleared for the fire lanes and protect fire operations on the ground, the same will be identified with rebar stakes driven flush into the ground and capped with dayglo tops. The fence will be marked with no parking or standing signs in the fire department staging area. And employee training will identify the need to protect the cleared area. The final site plan shall be revised to show snow storage areas that avoid encroaching on the fire protection areas identified in the fire department's access plan. With respect to other public health-related concerns about truck access, the existing commercial site interest is being repaid with DOT approval. Access to the site interiors controlled, gated and monitored. Impacts on planning and zoning growth or community character. The existing heads-up shelving industry involves the use of portions of the site for open storage as well as other enclosed uses related to the processing of the medical shelving units within existing buildings on the industrial site and also involves an existing accessory office use for the business where the office is equipped with a restroom. In keeping with section one forty dash fifty dash thirty-three dash C, all outside storage, placement areas for items as is shown on the plan and the plan also specifies the uses taking place within the existing structures on the site for the heads-up use, as well as showing specifically for the ASAP scrap LLC component for the office trailer, dumpster roll-off and seat containers being removed and those to remain with their listed use along with the location of scales and various equipment and processing pads and their purposes. For both components of the site use, only the outside storage and placement of items and materials is shown on the plan to be amended, shall be permitted and the retained vegetation with assistance screening use will be noticed on the plan it is to be retained. The architectural design requirements of section one forty dash fifty dash thirty-five are addressed to the extent that the additional building that is to be added for precious metal storage will be a pre-engineered wood frame structure measuring thirty-five by forty-five by seventeen with a roof pitched at four-on-twelve with steel siding installed on all walls and a steel roof, seven white vinyl thermal paint, double hung windows, a commercial glass, front entry door and insulated steel door and one commercial overhead door. Certification shall be added to the plan in accordance with one, section one forty dash fifty dash thirty-eight. As the site is located in the I three district, in accordance, in accordance with section seventy of the zoning law, a second primary use of the site shall be allowed provided that all other zoning use and area requirements for each use have been met. And further, that the applicant shall obtain a special exception use permit and site plan approval, regardless of whether the individual uses would otherwise be permitted uses not ordinarily, not ordinarily requiring an SEU permit, subject to a finding by the planning board that the uses are not incompatible with each other. ASAP Scrap Recycling LLC requires registration under six NYCRR Part 360, which was obtained on June twenty-eighth of this year for end-of-life vehicles. Ferris and non-ferris metals and a maximum throughput limit for the facility of five hundred pounds per day of non-ferris metals, five tons of ferris metals, forty car tires per day and eight hundred vehicles per year. The facility pays customers to receive their scrap metals and does not receive payment for the value of the materials as it has received until it is transferred and sold to processors. So it is to the ASAP scraps advantage to keep the time that scrap metal resides on its property to a minimum. The facility must comply with the DEC registration conditions set forth in Part 360 point one seven, point one five. End-of-life vehicles are to be decommissioned in accordance with the requirements of the DEC prior to crushing, which includes drainage of all fluids, removal of lead and acid batteries, devices containing mercury, refrigerants and airbags in accordance with, in accordance with best management practices established by the DEC. To this end, the applicant has clarified the refrigerants will be drained using a Robin Air device and that airbags will not be removed from the vehicles but that by, by removal of the batteries, the airbags will not deploy when the vehicles crush. As a condition of approval, the operations plan will be satisfactorily amended to improve the level of detail and to identify operational compliance with the requirements of six NYCRR Part 361 dash seven point four D. And the site plan or operations plan will be amended to identify the location of the bucket containing mercury, containing automotive devices and switches, as well as a concrete pad on which vehicles will be placed when being drained of refrigerant prior to being placed on the environmental draining raw fluids. The bulk requirements for a recyclable handling and recovery facility set forth in section seventy dash twenty are met. The double seventy-five foot setback of a hundred and fifty feet is far exceeded as the operation is more than three hundred feet from the line and separated by an existing wooden buffer that is remaining. That's a rear yard. The site plan shall be revised to show the double side yard requirement that is provided, but not clearly marked against a portion of the R eight point five district located at the southeastern portion of the site. The plan shall further be revised to indicate that the existing wooden, wooden areas within the requisite recyclable, recyclable handling facility yards shall not be disturbed or removed. Section one thirty dash forty dash thirty-six point B dash eight requires financial assurance estimates and proposed forms of surety as per section E. Section one thirty dash forty dash thirty-six point, uh, point B, point nine requires a proposed facility closure plan. Section one thirty dash forty dash thirty-six dash C addresses citing and design requirements which are satisfied as regards this facility. Adequate accessibility to firefighting and emergency response is assured by the Walden Fire Department review and appropriation of the fire department access plan showing fire truck paths and movements on the site as discussed previously. Section one thirty dash forty dash thirty-six point D addresses operations of the site. Thus, from operational areas and roadways have been addressed above, no material shall be permitted to blow off-site and orders are not expected to be a factor as operation processes scrap metal. The facility regularly monitored by a yard manager operator for any waste or debris which will be promptly collected and disposed of in the onsite dumpster and as a condition of a land use approval, language to this effect will be added to the operations plan to address this requirement. The applicant has submitted a detailed operational plan to accompany the site plan, both of which will be required to be amended as described elsewhere. The hours of operation are proposed to be from seven-thirty AM. The hours of operation are proposed to be from 7:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 8 a.m. to noon on Saturday. The operations plan shall specify the holidays cited in the zoning law, on which operations shall not be conducted in addition to Sundays, namely New Year's Day, Memorial Day, July 4th, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Day. There will be no noise generated by the facility operations when not in operations, and the highest level of facility-generated noise experienced at the property line will fall below the 57 decibels during the hours specified above. Additional operating requirements under Section 130-40-36.D-3 apply to the use as a recyclable handling and recovering facility. That at a minimum, all required of 6-NYCRR Part 360-12 must be met. That trucks transporting recyclables must be removed within one week of being filled to capacity. That a post-monitoring fee in accordance with Section H of this local law shall be paid to the town to facilitate inspections and record upkeep of recyclables handling and recovery facilities. That all onsite storage shall occur inside of an approved structure or contained within a covered roll-off or other acceptable container. In the case of this plan, two areas for processing and temporary storage awaiting processing consist of a concrete pad surrounded with three-sided enclosures, consisting of a five-foot-high large concrete blocks to be covered with a canvas tarp when not in use, and the material storage locations, as well as processing locations are all shown on the plans. The planning board notes that this facility will not accept tires without rim for incidental transport as part of processing ELVs, as the facility's purpose is a scrap metal recycling Section 130-40-36-G addresses permit renewal requirements for such facilities and operations, which is stated in 130-40-36-G shall be valid for a period of two years from the date of issuance. As set forth in this section, the permit holder will notify, shall notify the planning board chairman and town building inspector in writing at least 120 days prior to the expiration date of the permit, to seek renewal or to indicate that the facility is being closed in accordance with the plan. A formal application for renewal is to include a certificate, certification by the applicant and owner attesting that the facility is currently operating in compliance with all applicable requirements of the zoning law, and a permit for the facility issued by the planning board. Section 130-40-36-H addresses monitoring fees and the requirements specified that the permittee shall pay to the town of Montgomery within 14 days of the issuance of the permit, a post-permit monitoring fee representing the estimated expense of the town of Montgomery, and monitoring the subject facility for a one-year period for compliance with the Lighting is proposed to replace floodlights on the trailer, which is being relocated within the site as shown on the plan. The applicant is proposing five wall-pack lights, with two to be located on the trailer and three to be located on the proposed precious metals building. The luminaires are reportedly International Dark Sky Association-approved, which would be expected to be consistent with the town's lighting requirements and will ensure that no skylighting would be created and no adverse off-site impacts. Planning board member Kelly has reviewed and signed off on the site lighting by memo of September 20th of 2019. Lighting would only be needed for short periods of time, such as in the early morning around closing time during winter months. Control of facility lighting is manual. Compliance with comments from the planning board consultants and showing the additional items noted herein will be required as routine condition of plan approval. Based on the proceeding, the planning board considers the project to be compatible with local and regional plans for the industrial use of the site, and therefore no significant adverse impacts are anticipated in the area of planning, zoning growth, or community character. Other impacts? No other potentially significant adverse impacts were identified according to the planning board as directed at a negative declaration to be adopted. Thank you, everybody, for listening to that. Any comments?
One, and something I'm not really sure about.
What page?
Page seven, had to do with moving the airbags for vehicles. Basically, there's chemicals in the airbags that in combination create gas. It's not outside air that fills the airbags, it's a combination of chemicals that creates a gas.
Along with electric.
Electric.
Triggers it, right?
Triggers it.
Right.
But the chemicals are still going to be contained in those of the packets. And, you know, there is certainly the possibility when you're tubing and crushing a vehicle that they'll be torn open. These days, not only have the large airbags in front of the passengers, but you have curtain airbags and side airbags on seats, and, you know, it's quite, I'm not sure what type of chemicals will involve, just that couple of chemicals combined, they sometimes even feed gases. So I just don't really understand. I'm not really sure what types they have, but I just was concerned.
The powder in the airbags. It's a miniscule amount, isn't it?
At least so.
Brett, I'm just thinking if they, these things blow up in your face when you have an accident.
Right.
How toxic they may be, I'm just curious, but I don't know.
And they do.
They blow up in your face when you have an accident.
They come apart.
Yeah, they will tear after they blow up.
Yeah, I knew somebody that one went off, and it broke. And I don't think it was any more than irritation.
Okay.
Anybody else?
The impact is worse than with the, yeah, because it's the impact, the airbag. So even like if there's a, you have to do extrication at accident, you have to watch you know where you cut, so you don't trip the airbag because it's an explosion.
Sure.
But I don't think the power is itself.
Is that?
Yeah.
No, I don't think so. Okay. Yeah. All right, anyone else on the neck deck? Entertain a motion to adopt the neck deck. By Rose, seconded by, oh, Jay, all who is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, there is some work to be done on the site plan, but we'll, it's in pretty good shape. I think there's just some cleanups, so I think that were some conditions.
And you have specified those in the neck deck.
So.
It's a, gives comment letter back, the plans and the company, so then we spoke.
Okay. So based upon what we've heard on what's in the neck deck, conditioned upon what's in the neck deck, and on the comments that you have to address and that you know you have to address, the site plan and SEU permit approval will be conditioned on those being addressed prior to signature. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to grant the site plan and SEU permit approval. By Jay, seconded by Rose, all who is in favor signify by saying aye. And that's with those conditions, okay? Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Yeah. The only thing that we would request if the planning board and attorney-in-law thinks it appropriate is that, but there was some question about the financial assurances from the stocks and as well as to when, we should be submitting that obviously it's a condition of approval, but it might make the most sense, we think, if that could be submitted with the planning board's recommendation on the monitoring fee, so the town board can look at that information all at once. Does that sound to the planning board would be okay with?
Yeah, it's in the neck deck, the amount?
Yes, for the permanent monitoring fee, yes.
Yeah, of course.
And then the applicant proposed that there should be no financial surety really required because anything on the site
Right.
will be taken off and resold, there will be nothing left, including the tires, which was a concern.
Right, the, I'll back up here and I'll read that portion for everyone. The planning board recommend an initial monitoring fee of $1,400 for the first year only, in order to provide for noise decibel readings to be taken at the property line if the building inspector deems necessary. The planning board will transmit this recommendation to the town board for its action pursuant to Section 130-40-36-8, and a timeline set forth there and under as condition of a land use approval. Okay?
Yes, correct, and we were just, the paragraph before that, I think it's referenced a couple of times, also describes the financial assurances, which in the town code, it's in the provisions as well, not specifically laid out as to when that happens, so we think it makes the most sense if that gets sent with recommendation on the post-term monitoring fee as well, if you could put all of that together.
Put the two together.
Yeah.
That makes the most sense.
Yeah, what it says is, is it basically, it leaves it strictly of the termination of the town board, and it's just noted that you addressed the item and the town board made it hard work, but it doesn't send them together. I did make a flag on that to send it to the city board to send it together.
Okay, great, that's a great one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Okay, next, this evening is Ponsit, Montgomery, 14 lot major subdivision with one commercial lot, extension request of conditional final approval. There've been 38 90-day extensions granted on this, two more across from the high school. Any discussion on Ponsit, Montgomery? It's going to go out to, it has to go retroactive to the 21st, so we go out to January 21st, 2020. Just 90 days, although we can do this, what we've been doing. Do you have?
Mark with the cane, that's right.
Okay, um, no discussion, so then I'll entertain a motion to grant a 30-day, a 39? 90-day extension? I have too many. By John, seconded by Jay, all who is in favor signify by saying aye. Next is Montgomery Corporate Park, Bracken 4.3, Bracken Road, extension request of SEU permit and site plan approval. It was approved in April 30th of 2012. Twelve six-month extensions, expires the end of this month. That will go out to April 30th of 2020. Any discussion on Montgomery Corporate Park? I'll entertain a motion to grant the 13th six-month extension out to April 30th of 2020. Motion by Rose, seconded by Jay, all who is in favor signify by saying aye. Next, we have Campbell Freightliner, 208 Henry Henning Drive, it's quality, they have an approval there, they've had it since October of 2016. There's been, this will be the fourth six-month extension, original on both these site places, 18 months. Any discussion on Campbell? I guess they're still going through with it. They didn't get their bearings, so yeah, the job was in a good spot. Good storm.
They made the modifications on the, they haven't had anything.
Yeah, you see the vehicles there in the trailer.
Yeah, that's it. This will go out to the same, April 30th of 2020. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to grant that fourth six-month extension. By Rose, seconded by John, all who is in favor signify by saying aye. And next, the last but not least, approval of the June 10th, 2019 planning board meeting minutes.
I think I was answered.
Jay, we queue?
Yes.
Do we have enough?
Well, hold on a second.
Just some little tweaks, I guess?
Jay was the one that said.
Okay. The one, normally I don't point out my edits, but this was important under a matrix. I was asked if the town could increase the decommission by overtime, and I said I think the options with the town, with the town felt it's not enough, we would not rely on the applicant to volunteer. The way it reads, it sounds like you would rely on the applicant to volunteer, right? So this, it's funny how one little word not changes the whole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then Brown's, it's spelled like you know it's that, Brown, Brown's Road.
Yeah, Leslie Brown.
Yeah. What's that?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, the very last paragraph, second, if the town felt that it's not enough, we would not rely on the applicant.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve the June 10th, 2019 planning board meeting minutes with those queued. By Ryan, seconded by Rich, all who is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And last, but not least, motion to adjourn.
Second.
By Ryan, seconded by Rose, all who is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.